Everybody, everybody okay? Can you go ahead and call the July seventeenth Orinoco Township Planning Advisory Commission meeting to order? Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Okay, thank you for that. Next item is to set the order of agenda. We have approval of the minutes. We have our continued CUP by T and M Properties discussing items on your business and attorney. Any changes, additions, or corrections or motions?
I'm glad you're back again. I tried it last time. It didn't work.
I second.
Do I have a second? I have a motion by Mr. Rucker and a second by Ms. White to approve the order of agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Chair votes aye, motion carries. Approval of the minutes. Um, I only had one thing on the um, on the page five, check at page six, but page five in the minutes. So Mr. Albert needs to continue the application, seconded by Ms. Collins. I don't recall doing that. I generally refrain from making motions for seconds. So I don't know if
Did you met with Cindy?
Cindy. Oh, so, okay. Gotcha. Never mind.
We got two.
Never mind, I forgot. Didn't think about that. I was gonna say, as chair, I, I refrain from. Any other, any changes, additions, or corrections?
I will approve the minutes unless it's a month.
Motion by Mr. Albert and a second by Ms. Berg to approve the minutes from June twenty-sixth. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Chair votes aye, motion carries. Okay, continued item, conditional use permit, OR two zero two three zero zero one CUP by T and M Properties of Orinoco, requests for conditional use permit to allow for the construction of of storage units on a nineteen point eight acre property properties located on Minnesota Lane Southeast Orinoco in the Northeast Quarter of the Southeast Quarter, Section twenty. Okay, Ally, I believe that's your call.
Yeah. Good evening. Can everyone hear me? Yeah, good. Um, today we are talking about the T and M Properties of Orinoco. Um, this is just the general information and site location. I've provided the board just blowups of what was already provided in your packet as the same information, just larger in case you wanted to take a look. Um, today we will be discussing the applicant recumitals for today's meeting. Okay, so as you can see, the applicant has revised a site plan. They are they have revised it to show one personal storage building, sixty-five by hundred and fifty-two, for a total of nine thousand eight hundred and eighty square feet. Um, this does differ from the previous seminals that showed two large buildings and the four accessory structures. Those have been removed and are no longer part of this conditional use permit review. The site plan shows a larger interior access drive. The drive now is a hundred feet wide to allow for full turning movement within the property. There is a, they now show septic drain fields and soil bearings. Um, on the site plan, this includes primary and secondary. There is also shown now the type C buffer yards, um, shown along Minnesota Lane Southeast and from the parcels Northwest property line extending southerly to the south wall of the southernmost proposed building. Um, and on the site plan, they show the type of trees that they will be providing. They also have provided turning radius ingress and egress. This, um, was a request by the board to show, um, how if a large recreational vehicle were to be coming onto the property from Minnesota Lane or exiting the property onto Minnesota Lane, what that, um, turning movement would be. Um, the consultant used, um, a bus, which is about twenty-five feet, um, and to represent like a large recreation vehicle. So as you can see, this is the recreational vehicle turning onto the site. Um, as you can see, it's just turning movements at different degrees. And then it's also showing the large recreational vehicle, if it were to need to turn around in that access drive. As you can see now, it is much larger with the hundred feet wide. This is showing a large recreational vehicle leaving one of the bays um, and coming out and then coming out onto Minnesota Avenue. So this is the egress of a large recreational vehicle. Um, pulling out, then going, and then turning onto Minnesota Lane. Um, a vertical site distance analysis was provided. This was provided, I think, Thursday or it was sometime last week, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. This was emailed out. And what this is showing is, um, now you can see the property is on its side. So that's Minnesota Lane going out to Minnesota Avenue, and that's the building and, um, the driveway. And on the bottom is you see, um, cars and, and it also shows the site distance at the different grade levels, which was also discussed in previous meetings and as noted in a couple of our referrals from County Public Works and from our Transportation Department um, in our Omseid County Planning Office. You can see, um, starting from over here on the right, if there was a vehicle that was leaving T and M Properties. And you can see as they drive towards, um, the end of the driveway and you can see their sight line um, coming down and as they meet in the middle, if there was another car on Ms. Wit, I think it's Whitliff, Whitliff property as she's coming up the hill. And then if there was another car to meet at the same point, at the same time, and how they would be able to see each other. So that is kind of what this diagram shows. If you have an additional questions, I think the consultant would be able to provide some information of how he was able to show this information. But this is basically what you're seeing here is the site distance as they're leaving the property and as the, the, um, other owner, Ms. Whitliff, would be also leaving the property at the same time or at any point. Um, as you can see, that Ms. Whitliff would be visible to T and M driveway and Ms. Whitliff driveway. Looking out towards the T and M property, a car would be visible. So, um, um, staff has recommended previously nine conditions. The, um, Orinoco Planning Commission Advisory Commission can approve. We've also added a tenth condition, which the applicant is proposing a personal storage building, sixty-five by hundred and fifty-two feet, nine thousand eight hundred and eighty square feet. The units will serve the owner's personal storage needs and will include sports cars, pickup trucks, boats, tractors, motorcycles, recreational vehicles, including motorhome. If there's any change in the use or the site plan, including but not limited to additional structures or changes in rental storage, Omseid County Planning Department will require amendment to the conditional use permit. So that is the added tenth condition. I can go over the first nine if you'd like. Um, but, um, I know that we've gone over them a couple times. Um, are there any questions? I will note that I didn't show it here, but the applicant did provide, um, the use of what will be in the storage units um, as well as, um, the definition of flex space that is also in there in, um, my report as well as the cover letter from GCube, the consultant.
This is no longer flex space.
Correct. But they did provide what was requested.
So where is the storage unit?
It's the, the manila, vanilla, orange color.
This whole thing?
That's it. And then this gray piece is the, uh, drive aisle. And that's what these turning radiuses are showing. Um, how they would be able to turn around within the, within that area, how a large vehicle of at least twenty-five feet would be able
So the temporary storage units are gone?
Yes.
Okay.
As well as the secondary structure.
Those secondary storage units, they were just containers, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, there were.
Do you have to have a permit to have a temporary storage unit?
Yes. But, and when, and when we discussed last week that we would require them to be tied down, but they're not longer part of that.
No, I, I'm just trying to think of the future. I didn't realize that you see a lot of storage units within our town field. Are there permits close?
I do not know the number of permits for those.
Well, I'm just, we're, we're battering him on this, you know,
Yeah.
on a temporary storage unit.
Also, it's not just this arc lily zone.
No, no, and I, that's what I'm trying to figure out, because I mean, storage units are diverse, easy, set them in place. Okay. That's good to know.
Are there?
What does it, they just
This, oh, standard letter.
Chris, do you know that answer? Is it just, just the arc lily zone needs the permit for a, a container storage or?
It's long-term storage. If it's being, if it's being treated as it said, it should at least get a zoning certificate if it's under two hundred square feet.
Yeah.
And any accessory building that's tied to a conditional use permit requires conditional use.
Okay. I just know there's a lot of brown, you know, you see them getting dropped all over the place now, but, but, but that entails
It's all done to get a zoning certificate. It's across the county, it's twenty-eight dollars. It's not very familiar.
Yep.
Outside of needing a conditional use permit, but this is a conditional use permit, so a, a storage container would require a conditional use.
There's any restrooms? It says there's potential septic here.
Um, right now, uh, this is, and this, what they've shown us, they don't show restroom, but there is potential for restroom. And that's why they, um, comment from our well and septic team as that they show, um, the, the septic tank and well.
So that could be coming attractions, not currently in this proposal?
Well, that's like building code.
Yep. Back into the planning from the building. Any other questions for Ally? So now that it's not a flex storage and it's a personal storage, does the zone have to change? It's a egg.
Wow.
And it's research. You have to have a zone
Resident residence for personal storage?
So in the definition, how your definition states, it just says personal storage or I can't think of what it says exactly. Um.
You don't have to have a residence in order to
No, they, you can approve this as a conditional use for personal storage.
Without a residence. Even those non- A.
So we're looking at it as kind of the definition we discussed last week as what a personal storage would be. Uh, one second. And how we defined it last time, what? From State County Department, personal household rental storage is a building or buildings used for storage or personal property where individual owners control individual storage spaces. The structure may be of various sizes for personal use, leased or rented on an individual basis. So we see that, yes, it could be based on, um, the code and how we have interpreted the code.
So now anybody can build and stuff for building.
No. No, not necessarily. This is just arc lily.
This one.
And, and, and every, and every conditional use is different, right? Every conditional use, it depends on what they're proposing and how they're proposing, just like this one.
Questions? Um, I would, um, entertain a motion to reopen the public hearing so we can hear it from you.
I'm aware. Let me reopen the second.
I have a motion by Mr. Rucker and a second by Mr. Albert to reopen the public hearing. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Chair votes aye, motion carries. Is the applicant or is representative here? Hello, Jason.
Hello again. Jason of GCube Engineering. Our address is one four zero seven zero five fifty three, so we very much so simplified this application. Eliminated, I think flex space was kind of confusing. It's kind of broad, um, broad term to use in this application. Um, and eliminating the second building, eliminating it, temporary accessory structures, other quality storage containers, simplifies it a lot. Uh, just having one building for personal storage, um, for the, for the applicants. Uh, it's going to be even a lower traffic generation cul-de-sac. And as Ally went through, we did provide turning movement exhibit, it's full ingress and egress, um, showing that motor home. And it's not a twenty-five foot. I'd like to correct that. It's forty feet. See, I have seven and eight.
Oh.
The total distance is forty feet, so twenty-five.
Sorry about that.
Just to show that the turning movement has worked. Um, and we also did do the vertical site distance analysis just to show that the vehicle at the bottom of the residence, the north C vehicle exiting, um, T and M Properties to the north, or sort of south, so. And then vice versa, any vehicle exiting from T and M can see all the way down the driveway, so there shouldn't be a conflict there. Um, you can see that just based on the eye level of, of vision, that, that diagram. Um, as far as that goes, we don't have any concerns. Um, I don't know. I think the Planning Department and the um, Traffic Department's commented on that. So I don't think they had issues with it. I think that is all I have. We very much so simplified it.
So Jason, at our last, at our last meeting, I had asked about an alternative driveway.
Yep.
Try to keep movement of these long vehicles off that corner on that cul-de-sac.
Yep.
Was there anything looked at for that?
We did, yeah. We cut a profile off of the field drive and then it, it basically paralleled to be Minnesota Lane all the way to the parking lot. We did look at that, but ultimately there's more slopes that land than you think there is. Uh, so we just figured that, one, it's going to be safer. It's going to be a shorter drive off the cul-de-sac. Um, basically maximizing that area, maximizing use of the area. And two, it's just going to be safer in winter time because of the grade of the driveway going up parallel to Minnesota Lane. Like those issues in the winter. Granted, this, the structure really won't be used that much in the winter. I don't think this wants to get everything stored. You know, in the fall, it should pretty much remain over winter until you have to get it up again spring, so. Yeah, no, we did look at that and ultimately the most cost-effective and the most feasible way to do it, um, safest way to do it, in my opinion, is just taking access off the cul-de-sac, so. And that's why we went through all the terrain movement diagrams, looked at the side vehicles and the vertical site distance analysis just to prove that it's going to be a safe intersection. I think all driveway, not all driveways, but in many circumstances where you have a driveway tying into either a cul-de-sac or tying into a road, you have to think of it as stopping condition at minimum, the yield condition. So it's not a thoroughfare where people are just going to be zooming throughout the driveway, all the driveway and onto the road. Um, so I think that's kind of a point that's been overlooked. In this case, once you get up to that intersection, you should be looking both ways versus, you know, jetting down Minnesota Lane, so. I'm not saying
So since there isn't that second building anymore, did you consider moving the building at all to the south just to give a little more room coming into the property?
We just held this because that's where the ground is ultimately been disturbed and that's where the building, they want the building, so it was
And I know, you know, we can't consider as part of this application, is there any plans for the rest of that property in the future?
So the first, if you think very back to the first meeting that we came, we had proposed a plan where we had two buildings kind of the northwest corner. And we had another driveway coming off the east where that field drive is wrapping down through. Like the original plan was had like a business park in there. Um, but they've kind of scratched that idea. They just want to build one building now, and I think let's hold on to the property and see what the market is like. Um, and then just ultimately reassess and come back if they do want to change, but they just want to go forward at this time, so.
Okay. So let me ask you another driveway question. If ten years from now, there's a need for additional storage or a little business park, as it was called.
Yep.
How, how are you going to access that?
Well, you have to look at, you have to look at the city limits in terms of this property, in regards to this property, I should say. And ultimately, that's ten, fifteen, twenty years down the road, depending on how fast the land develops to the north one hundredth. That could be, this property could ultimately be rezoned. I think that's the grand scheme. That's the big picture here.
Right, but, but multiple accesses can be
Well, they could split the parcel. That way you'll have one access to one parcel, understand what I'm saying? So that's why they kind of want to keep this access up the cul-de-sac, so it'd be their own deal. And then in the future, ten, fifteen years down the road, if they'd wanted to split or if the city grew, ultimately got contiguous to this property, they could rezone, split, whatever they want to do.
And there's no more hauling rock and stuff up?
Not until permits are approved. We gotta get a grading permit approved and conditional use permit has to be approved. Building well, septic.
I mean, as far as providing material for other projects, that's
Yeah. Yep.
Please ask us a question about what I've seen here. Like, so there's different trajectories happening.
Yep.
So can you just kind of walk me through, like, which, yeah, why there's something
Let's just focus, set up an actual plan. Let's look at the bottom left-hand corner of that page.
Okay.
So you see the design vehicle is at the left-hand side. See, it's kind of, there's dimensions anyway. It's a forty-foot design vehicle.
Where it says bus?
Yep.
Okay.
So basically that is your bus essentially on a paper, okay? So let's look at the longest one that goes all the way to the south that makes a U shape, like a perfect U shape. So the inside line would be the path of travel for the inside wheel. That makes sense. And then the outside dark line would be the path of travel for the, be the left wheel, the left wheels. And then we just have different angles shows. So you have a ninety-degree, these are just the common angles. Or sorry, you have a one eighty degree, which would be your perfect U shape, and you have a one fifty, which would be between the U, between that uh, one twenty, you have one twenty, and you have a just a right-hand turn, a ninety-degree turn that goes directly to the east. And you have a sixty-degree turn, and you have a thirty-degree turn, which is the northern also. So that is basically the design template that Minn dot uses just for dropping on plants and making sure that turning movements can stay within the limits of the traveled road, so. That's basically in a nutshell what that is.
So that top diagram there.
Yep.
On Minnesota Lane.
Yep.
It's the one, two, three, four, one, graphics. That's the one demonstrating that they get in.
Yep, yep.
Okay. And then, and the bottom diagram, this is their turning or round?
Yep, it'd be, even in the analysis, it'd be a hundred eighty-degree turn.
So they're coming down like this and going around.
Other way.
Other way, they're going here.
Yep, yep. Yep.
So you're, that U shape there is what's demonstrating that, thank you.
Correct, yep. That shows them better. Basically extrapolated it to that day. But vice versa, if they're driving in off of the driveway and coming in, they would literally just flip-flop that diagram, slid back in the other way versus making a full U turn in the parking lot.
I get one.
Yep.
I get you. It's okay. So, yeah, just walk me through, because there's, you know, there's these different angles of sight.
Sure.
Which one should I be paying attention to?
So the, I guess the most important one, if you want to look at the lower, be on your left-hand side of your page, be from the Woodland driveway.
Angela, I think your question is if there's a car sitting down here in Whitliff's.
Yep.
And there's a vehicle sitting over here at T and M, if you follow that red line.
That's your sight line.
That's your sight line, so
Okay.
regardless of where those vehicles are at all times, they should be able
Okay.
I think that's your question, right?
Yep.
Okay, I get, because on mine, it says vehicle exiting T and M is on the left and vehicle exiting Whitliff is on the right. So this is why I was
It's
No, that's because the vehicle sitting at T and M, that's how I just kind of described it. So vehicle exiting the Whitliff residence from T and M can see, so vehicle sitting at T and M can see a vehicle exiting Whitliff residence.
I see, okay.
And vice versa, vehicle exiting
Okay.
Whitliff residence, this will be T and
Thank you.
Yep.
So we're just talking personal storage now, no
Yeah, this personal storage, the term black space, um, it's kind of my fault, it's kind of convoluted and kind of broad, but yeah, it's just, that was stricken from the CUP and application, so it's be stricken from your memories and it's just circled for personal storage.
But if they wanted to do rental, you'd have to come back again.
You'd have to come back, and that's part of the conditions.
So I, in follow-up to Rich's question, I assume that it's a divided building. So I assume it's just still Mark and Tony are in a fair building.
Yeah, that's going to be a future wall that they're interior. So it's basically going to be too large, they have a too large storage base that are going to be open. So that is their plan.
Any other questions for for Jason?
I'm happier than I was a month ago.
I guess, thank you.
Awesome, maybe this.
It's a public hearing, and so I will ask if there's anybody that would like to speak for or against this application. Anybody that would like to speak for or against this application? Last call. Anybody like to speak for or against this applications? I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Rucker and a second by Mr. Albert to close the public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both? Chair votes aye, motion carries. Chair votes aye, motion carries. Well. I have to tell you that. I wish we had started with this. Think it took us a long time to get here. It's one of those deals where, you know. First thing is flawed and, and all of a sudden you're trying to fix this law and you end up making a decision that might come back to bites in ten weeks. And I was concerned if that's where we were at. I, I'm not a hundred percent comfortable with going all the way up to the cul-de-sac to get into the property. But as Rich said. I am more comfortable with what we're seeing tonight than I have been with anything else we've seen. Um, I just wish there was a. I, I just wish that the. Vehicles that were going in and then all the turning was being done inside the property instead of going up to that cul-de-sac and. You know, the, those, those turning radiuses are, they're not. Some of them are kind of sharp, depending upon how long. But again. He's not bringing in multiple. Well, and that's. That's why I. Even though I'm not entirely comfortable, I, I think I can live. Live with it because we're down to personal storage. We all have our own personal storage, right? How often you get into it? You have a boat, you put it out in the spring and away in the fall, and I think that's what a bunch of this is. And as a side note, this commission. And maybe even staff. But. We, you know, land use planning and zoning ordinance stuff, we need to define. What we think flex space is versus indoor storage. That's just a note for us down the road. Any comments? Discussion?
I, I just have a question about, not necessarily this, but just anything, uh. I'm sorry, I just, I have a question just about kind of process in the future, not necessarily about this, but just generally speaking. Or something like this where it might be expanded on and, you know, so on and so forth. Um, do we, that requires a new conditional use permit, correct? And so at that time, if we say like. Let's say hypothetically, it's this property. Okay, now there's going to be more motorhomes, probably there's going to be more in, in this driveway feels problematic for handling that volume. Can we address that in? The future?
As part of that CUP.
Which could include moving the driveway even? Okay. So we, we can do that, okay.
We can put a condition on them. If they want to expand the number of storage buildings or whatever, they're going to have to change the entrance. That was kind of why I was asking Jason down the road. What are you going to do with this?
I guess my only comment would be, I, I'd hate to have, to have that other Minna access removed. It's not a field drive. I have a fifty-four page. Document by Minna that indicates why they put that access there because they already did all the traffic controlled. I mean, we have that in the township. It's a fifty-four page Minna document, why they put that access there, I. I know our zone only allows for one access, but I'd really like to allow the applicant to keep. That driveway, but also keep the Minna approved. I just hate to rip out a fifty-four foot wide.
Where is that?
Right, to see. It's a huge fifty-four foot. I mean, it's, it's legit.
I think the applicant started showing the removal of that because we were saying you could only have one access.
Right, and at the township meeting, uh, GQ came in and said, oh, they changed their mind. We're going to keep the access now and not use that one. So when I got this, I was like, okay, now we're back to using this one, so. I, I just really hate to have to remove that, and because I can see in the future, if we go to do a land split. Why don't we, you know. I would think you'd want to keep that.
He's going to have to pay to remove it, then somebody's going to pay to put it back in.
That seems ridiculous, because Minna actually is the one that constructed that, you know, I just think it's.
I. Well, we could, we could. Make that a condition? Would you make that a condition that they, they leave it? I know the public hearings close, but would the applicant have a problem if we required you left that Minna access?
I think these guys prefer. Like to clarify.
But, but the. But I want. So. If we made it a condition, I don't know if that's what we need to do, but we can make. Any condition that they leave it, but they cannot use it.
They have the option.
But, but.
But they could leave it so that. Down the road. Cause I, they went to all that expense to put it in, and it's a nice wide access.
Very nice access, so it seems. We should allow it to remain even though it says something, so we should allow it.
But if I catch you driving a bus through there. I, I, you didn't let me finish. If I catch you driving a bus, you're going to be in trouble. If you, if the farmer that's farming it drives a tractor in there, that's a different deal.
Just in keep.
Don't wait to spell it, I'm good.
I think you're one, and I think she is too.
Uh, may not improve on. So, future.
I did, I wrote applicant, applicant can leave east field drive, but can only be used for field access, farm field access.
Do you want to say? Do you want to say may not improve until further planned development?
Well, or without a C, without additional CUP, they can't improve that driveway.
Do you want to add on to his then?
Yeah.
So what would that be?
Advocate can leave east field drive. But can only be used for farm field access.
Do we want to say lost? Because can to me sounds like they can choose to.
Well, I mean.
I mean, this is. I was wondering if we should say they lost me.
Lost seems very abrupt.
It does, and that's not exactly the right word, but can seems flexible.
We're not requiring to leave.
No, if he wants to go to the expense to take it out, he can.
Yeah.
But he'll have to pay to put it back in some. We're just giving him the option that he doesn't have to remove.
Yep.
And I think that makes him happy. Not so much taking it out, but he has to put it in someday.
Rock's expensive.
You think?
That would be number one. That would be number.
Yep. That would be a condition number one. Would the applicant be okay with that? Well, based on what I'm hearing, I think. What we're, what we saw tonight in the changes is a much more, everybody seems much more comfortable with it.
Well, I would make a motion that we approve. Or point point three dash, you're the ones you've leased by, you know, properties to defend conditions. And then adding condition number eleven. An applicant can, applicant can leave easily. May, may leave there, you know, may leave. Uh, the east driveway, but can only be used for farm field access.
One question, do we have to clarify that that, that we're talking about the Minna installed?
Okay.
I don't want to say, I think we probably should clarify, it is the one.
M dot, east field drive. Right? So add M dot in front of east.
All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
A second.
Make sure we know which Collins.
All right. I have a motion by Mr. Rucker and a second by Ms. Collins to approve CUP OR two zero two three dash zero zero one. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Chair votes aye, motion carries. We got there, took a while. Tonight, anything from? Folks out in the audience that you wanted to bring up? You state your name and address for the record.
I got a building coming. I'd like to level off the rock that's there so they can plant the building. I'm leaving Florida months, eight, two, three weeks, so it's going to get done. Just going to level rock up, so it makes the building, then set it on the flat spot until everything's done.
Now wait a minute.
So I'm asking your files, I just want to level.
So we just approved your CUP and you're already wanting to go outside of rules?
So I mean, it's just the time.
And, and, no, wait a minute. I, I understand you got work doing in Florida, but that's not our.
Forget I even brought it. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, great time, guys.
Thank you. Other business, anything you guys want to bring up?
I just thought I'd let everybody know what's going on with like Aspen Ridge and Volteris states.
They're starting doing something out there.
Yeah, they brought the earths were expensive.
They cut some weeds though.
Yeah, just because our township attorney, um, is working on a developer agreement. With both Aspen Ridge and Volteris states, and that's related to. Help the township out, um, and, and lay down, you know, the county does a lot of work with these developments saying. Here's all the things you need to do for erosion and retention ponds and everything, but the township's looking at a developer agreement to say. We're not taking over the road until X, Y, Z is done, um, retention funds will be handled in this fashion, so it's related to. Kind of take that initial step further to protect us. Um, this is like my first time ever going through this whole development process, and I think the history was, the previous board was like. We don't, we don't really need to do that, um, but our township attorney said, I think we do. And so we're moving forward with those developer agreements. The only thing I think that's. Tying them up right now is our township attorney said something about bonding. And the developers use a different method of securing deposits or money or whatever, so I think they're just. They went through and redlined some things on Friday. And are turning it back over to the developers, so there's some negotiation.
Yeah, letter of.
Versus bonding, so, um, so I just wanted to bring everybody up to speed on this. You know, I, I've never been through that before, and I brought it up to our township attorney saying, you know. We talked about retention funds, saying, oh, we don't want to, because the township have to be involved in retention. Instead, I think we need to get a developer, because if I'm in an HOA and the retention fund needs. Fixing whatever, once in ten years, my buddy's got a backhoe, and when it's fun to just get the buddy in the backhoe, you know. This could happen, and they go and they do their thing, and the next time it rains, it all runs into the neighbor's basement, and now. You know, and so there's a lot of that, which is all very, you know, for me, um, learning curve, but. When I got the phone with the attorney, he's like, yeah, I mean, we need to do the whole. And I know the developers were not. Really happy with us when they found out we were proposing this, but it's really to, to. Keep us safe here in the township from.
It's not that uncomfortable, it's normal.
Is that because it hasn't happened here before? It was brought to them after the final plan of. Timing, it's the changing of what the expectations throughout the process. So I know Aspen Ridge, it seems like every time they turn around, we're asking a little bit more of them. So, um, but, but Aspen Ridge has worked in many different, um, jurisdictions where this is. Part of the communication process, so it's not warranty either one of these applicants. It's just negotiating it out with the lawyers at this point, and.
So I think note to self, like next time, we do have some kind of.
Well, now we'll have them in place, so when our, oh, did the moratorium get approved?
Yes, it did. On the agenda for July, and so it's going to be, um, there August to September, yeah.
Well, so by the time moratorium's over. Township attorney should have this.
Yeah.
Kind of a canned letter to start with, and then tailor it for each.
And maybe we just put that in our subdivision packet that we have, you know, we've got our subdivision ordinance kind of thing, like maybe we just. You know, as we go through our land use plan, and then somebody has to be the first.
Well, some of these things, we're just kind of bringing our township into, you know.
Where it should be.
Right, into the twenty-first century?
Yeah. I know, I had to apologize to the other township board members, I'm like, I'm sorry, I just had questions, it's funny. Just.
Cause I, I think the other. The other thing you had mentioned to me once was about a road. Road ordinance or something to do with roads you. We just thought maybe we ought to come through OPEC and.
Oh, the driveway. The driveway ordinance, so, you know, Old State County has a very robust access ordinance. But it really applies more to county roads, like access on the county roads and things like that. Really, they don't pertain to our township and the specialties of our township. So our township attorney did draft up, uh, access ordinance. And, um, maybe I can bring that to next month's meeting and we can start to review it. I think if we reviewed it here, it would make more sense. If we approved it and then brought it, given though the township board is like the road authority, I think from a planning perspective, we need to know. How we want this access, these access pieces.
So can we get it to Sarah and? August or September, whenever our next meeting is.
Whenever the next.
Include it in the packet so we can.
Do you want it just as a discussion item?
I'm starting. Well, I think we'll start as just a discussion item. And if that's in August, then maybe in September, we'll bring it back as a public.
As of right now, we don't have any obligations for you for August.
Thank God.
Um, so you may be just doing. It's the, you can just back and just be part of your land use to special. Um, also. If it's okay, I need to bring something up. Um, our, what our transportation planner told me today that there is planning transportation funds available. So if, um, you wanted to do like corridor study over your seventy fifth street. Um, that would be something that the county helped you with, and, um. Either the town board or a page, you can contact, um. Somebody in our, one of our transportation managers to find out more, like. How, how to team up with them to, to do that kind of a study. But there's like a hundred. Little over a hundred thousand dollars of planning dollars available for a study. They're doing an area study in. Willow, Willow.
Bro, Creek?
Willow Creek area this year, so to give you an idea of what that looks like, they just had the open house for it. Um, at the end of June. Willow Creek is like.
You go to, go out to Fleet Farm, instead of turning east to Fleet Farm, go west, Willow Creek, Gulfport, small.
Yeah, and it's like, it's a pretty broad area down there that they're doing the transportation study for, and I just know. From talking to Minna with a couple. Of proposed developments. of proposed developments along seventy-fifth street and that eighteenth avenue corridor, they would really like to see some type of township road built in, um, to connect those properties, so as they develop, having you guys require a road rather than having accesses onto seventy-fifth street, so that's something that could possibly come out of this study.
Well, seventy, seventy-fifth street is our problem, biggest problem, we got some others, but.
I just saw something about a park and ride being built.
It's already there.
Is that on our side or on the other side?
Because, you know, when you're coming off fifty-two, that's still technically our township, but the park and ride is actually on Cascade, so they showed us the transportation route and how they're gonna loop and they're just gonna come pick them up and, and just kind of do a circle back to Mayo. Um, and they gave us the hours, they're doing some raid gardens and, um, natural plantation areas there. And then a nice shelter for people to sit and raid for their rides.
So who's putting that in Mayo or Cascade Township?
Um, no, it's not Cascade Township paying for it, it was.
State of Minnesota.
State of Minnesota, it's a.
The Ken City of Rochester.
Yeah, I think they're both kind of combining it.
Take some load off of the IBM parking lot.
Yeah.
So Mayo's running shuttles from there?
Mayo will be running buses out to this new park. So you can get on there to like go downtown, and I think it's actually gonna be city rush or city buses.
And you're just employed.
I think it's especially for city buses, because that way it just takes you down the public library, you can go to Mayo if you get to.
It's a public parking, I don't think it's just Mayo.
So you could, you could go over there, catch the bus, go downtown and then bring the bus back home.
Yes.
Well, I think it's really smart, because that's a big issue for a lot of people, is I want to take this library, I don't want to do a parking, or, you know, I want to support some of the downtown development, but I don't want to do a parking.
Right.
So now you can park there, they'll come and pick, I, I think you told me every hour, on the hour, they're coming from, you know, certain times, they're not gonna run late at night, they went through all the lighting, you know, on the buildings, so they're not disturbing neighbors and all of that, so. Yeah, so I went to two public. There really, there's one neighbor there, she just wanted to make sure the lights weren't shining in her bed, pretty much, and the hours, she was kind of concerned about hours.
Oh, last month, Lori, I said there was this sign across from SMB at Cornfield, said, uh, for sale, we'll build the suit. And I was just wondering what you're gonna build there if they do sell it.
Oh.
And how they're gonna have access on to highway sixty-three there. Seventy-fifth, right across from that SMB place that, uh, it's kind of like Hiawatha Homes.
Outside, right across the street, I drove down. I don't.
On the ratchet?
I don't know.
Signs have been up forever, but.
So it's on the Cascade side?
Oh.
No, it's on the north side.
Yeah, it's the north side.
That's our side.
The north.
We'll build a suit?
Yep, that's what the sign says.
Where am I going?
Further to the west.
Further so.
Sun. It's west of Eighteenth Avenue.
So next to it.
West.
Next to where they're gonna build that church, or where they want to build it.
We don't, we haven't received any calls on it ourselves, but, um, um, that was one of the properties that Midoutlet's talking to us about, sits up straight to my soul.
Is that the U-shaped?
The one with all the trees on it, the last one.
This one? Oh.
No. This.
Other way.
This one.
Oh, yeah.
No, but it's on the north side, right?
No, that's on the right, you're on the side of sixty-three, right there where it hurts.
Thirty-four.
Okay, so thirty-four, isn't that the one where they planned to do?
Thirty-four was that C road that, but we haven't gotten that.
Um, signs just say build a suit and they've been up for probably better than a year or better. It's a farm, it's a cornfield right now. And then the houses, so the property's kind of U-shaped around the house and the farmstead.
That's going that you know.
That's west.
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 So it's thirty-four.
And through.
So a real estate agent put the sign up.
Shop and make a little loop around that little square, yeah, that area. But yeah, I haven't heard anywhere either. And that reminds me that event center, I see Logan Swenson has sent out a couple of more notes, um, asking us if there's any other place he could potentially build, or if he would partner or pay for his own road to get into that property.
Or is that?
Here's what's sent to Doc.
Oh, really?
Oh, I think this video is so happy, I was like.
Or Claire Whittler's.
Yes.
Fifteen acres or whatever, cross on the corner, Cross McLeirs.
Oh, okay.
And it's like.
I haven't heard of this one yet.
Castle.
That was a while back before you, before you were here.
That was the county. And it was, it looks like something that should be on the edge of Roger. Not in or in the township, it was like, oh my gosh, um, and then the,
This one?
I just, I know, it's a great concept, very polished concept, but it needs work with the property, plus there's no way we can have four hundred plus cars and, yes, coming down that gravel road.
Cause the only way into that proper, what property would either be right on the corner, which put in that kind of access on the corner.
Yeah, it's.
And he's halfway up that hill, you know, it's spinning, trying to get.
Was, was the property owner the one that you talked to?
We've got a developer, who's, he's a realtor, his dad's a realtor and he's a developer and he is a potential buyer, potential buyer, really, really wants to do the event center. So he's very limited because of the bluff land.
Yes.
There, and so we tried to explain that to him.
He's like, yeah.
And so he was hoping at some point you could like walk down and he'd have like a platform out on the water where they could do water side weddings on the beach. So anyway, when he replied to me or asked me again if there was any place else, I said, then you know, we've got the Orinoco junkyard.
That's scary.
There's probably some governmental funding that could help you.
Right.
Let's say that would cost way too much than excavating that entire block.
Oh. So seeing a road, um, Cindy's neighbor down in Cedar Beach is selling their property. And when they were looking at the pins and property lines.
I don't know.
Cedar Beach's road, our pins are four feet out.
Four.
And that's in O nine. Yeah, now we're in twenty-three. Oh, I know, I know. They just keep coming over and they, the road grader just making his own land, so. Um.
Which by the way, did you know Cedar Beach Road was originally called Oak Street?
I didn't know that.
Cause you put the road back in place out in Ryan's Bay.
Yes, yes, it needs to be within the flatted, and I know it's tricky in those neighborhoods.
It's not really, Mark Tines property on the other side and there's no help. That's where that road. And that road is moved over from that, what, I think if you come through Cedar Beach,
Yeah.
the road stays where it's supposed to, and then you get to the top of that hill.
Yes.
Where Mark put in his driveway, shoot up it, that road now is coming over.
Oh.
So we'll show you, but is that a township or is that a county?
No, that's township.
All right.
Oh.
Cause it's something that at some point probably should be addressed because of.
It needs to go back into the platted.
It's simple, I mean, I.
You guys are gonna have bigger yards all of a sudden.
It's just, it just keeps moving. I, I can look back thirty years ago when I moved in down there. And where, where I mowed, that guy's all the way up to our tree, you know, I mean, as he keeps moving in, the grader, you know, I'm gonna start doing what everybody else is doing down there, put my own cones in and start pegging right in the middle of the street, now I can stay over.
Well, my concern with that is we, we had the planted road there, and as it shifts, it's also shifting the water runoff, which is messing up our culverts and washing out dry.
And so it's just. Creating a little ditch that people throw their brush into.
Oh, I did send her a letter, but she got a letter from the township saying stop doing that.
But how many other ones are like that? I just, I mean, I know Cedar Beach, because we've had our surveys down there, so that's, I know it's off. How many are there like that in the township? When you think we've got issues, cause that's expensive.
Anything around the river in these old areas like Kingscar, Cedar Beach, Sunset Bay, every single one of them's like it.
Yeah, so how do you, what do you, as a town board, you look at which ones are worse or which ones are growing, or what do you, what determines what you do?
Probably squeaky wheel gets bigger, you know, that's probably what's.
Talking about Eleventh Avenue last, last month, and that's my call path that keeps.
Yeah.
He sent those pink pigs, he was supposed to bring the road back. And I, I don't know if he's done that.
So all craft is keeping where the turn is, but now if you put more traffic on there, they're gonna swap because.
Hopefully they do, like you said, come across and it, and finds roundabout way.
Well, and I think maybe even that transportation study, if we can get some of that funding, we can do something with the left avenue, because we do have to have some way to direct the traffic, right? Can't keep putting more.
On these small ones.
Yeah. So I mean, maybe that's something we could look at with some of that transportation funding, is the seven, seventy-fifth street corridor. And then how can we alleviate, get it over to eighty?
So when we meet next month, that'd be something that we'd work on is identifying some of these key points, part of it, to look at. Um, so couple of questions for you guys. Um, so who does our enforcement, who comes and if we get a complaint, who's the person? Who?
On the road?
And just in general, if somebody calls and complains because their neighbor put up a shed that's, you know, not, they weren't supposed to or whatever, who do we call to?
Well, Rob Mathijs is our enforcement officer and he'll investigate it.
Right, okay. And.
To the point of needing like persecution. If it has to, yeah, prosecution, they're like.
Persecuting.
Fucking law, I mean. No, it's. Voluntarily getting better.
Right.
Then it's the township attorney that.
The first, the first point to do the investigation is Rob. And what is his number?
Oh, I got, oh, shoot, I forgot my.
On your books.
Monday. Monday, Wednesday. I'm not really, hey, you're.
Like a notice.
A notice, yeah. What, what happens eventually, like if somebody doesn't?
And we persecute them.
Holds a case up and then even present it to whoever attorneys in charge to determine whether or not it's worth taking it for a over.
Okay, do they get fined?
And then. Those are all signs for everything.
No, or. You should have been holding a lot.
But they first, it's early on to the attorney of how, how, how far it goes.
Yeah.
Um, are this.
They got plates crazy and places.
Even if you're doing something.
And there's a need to.
There's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well.
Is it really, you know, so do people usually know?
Okay. I mean.
Right now.
Oh, that was my. Or, you know, throw them off the scent.
Yeah. Something less, cause whoever bought it. Okay, and there, I was, there was two people I was gonna ask, enforcement, and now I can't remember.
Perstitution.
Transportation? Yeah, if, if there's a transportation, oh, that's what it was. So the, this money that might be available to do a traffic study, who would I call for that?
Um, Charlie Ryder. And, um.
Numbers in the back.
Yeah.
He has a couple of memos in there. It's not that stuff. Well, and if you recall, Charlie and Sandy came to a mediation.
Yeah.
And Charlie talked about, about that, and we could do a transportation study. When, is, is it twenty twenty-five that the roundabout is scheduled for?
That's what he said in the. Yeah, early on in this project. Well, M dot said.
So I could call Charlie and talk to him about, about whether we can get funds to. Has, has, since Cascade is on the other side of the road, have they given any indication that they're interested in it or?
I don't know, I don't know many townships they've approached, it's kind of a, the first time um, we've had this kind of planning dollars available, so it's kind of a new process to reach out to to different groups to say, hey, we have transportation planning dollars available.
I mean, it, it actually was, does twofold, right, it helps us and it should help Cascade.
Right, cause everyone's building on the house, dumping more people right on the side of the road.
Is this fun to use it or lose it?
Yeah, they said they have a hundred and thirty.
So if we don't use it, they, somebody else.
Somebody else.
We should get our name in there first.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna call Charlie. That would be very beneficial.
Yes.
Thank you, that was the second person I was gonna ask.
That's why she's here to keep this out.
Sorry.
I have a question, given that we might be doing the land, we can stop next, bond. Um, so you remember I talked about those email responses I got when I read about language to put in for protecting sensitive things? Should I, I just haven't forwarded them because we've been so busy with all this other stuff, should I? Is this the time you want me to do that, so you can see what Sandy had to say and what other people had to say? And if so.
I think so. Send it to Sarah or Stephanie, if you don't have Sarah's email, and then they'll forward it out to the rest of us.
Did you want me to do that? For the next one, okay.
Sooner. We can actually digest.
Yeah.
And then, you know, so it's not just an hour before we even take them.
Hour before the meeting.
I guess O M A when I get, I have it, it's the same day, I just. Which ninety, ninety, ninety-eight percent of the time is not their fault.
No, it's not. Was it, did you get these today?
My, my pack that I got last.
Why did you?
That's why I got.
Down Thursday.
When it comes on Monday, it's like, oh, I got a meeting tonight.
Well, and just FYI, in case you aren't aware, starting July twenty-second, they're doing asbestos abatement. Pine Island Post Office, so all the PO box stuff from Pine Island is now gonna be at Orinoco for. Saying, I'm having time to find them. So you thought Mayo delivered, you said deliver, it won't affect delivery, just the PO box.
Yeah.
That's funny.
Just blowing it into Amazon price. Get it down.
Oh, wait, it's gonna be a lot of pressure. All right, so you're gonna send that road or driveway then?
I will send it.
To Sarah?
Yes.
And that'll be part of our.
Yeah.
As a discussion item.
Because Rob and I just really can't enforce anything unless we have an ordinance.
Exactly.
So I'd like to get that going and then it's just guidelines.
And then the attorney already is the one that drew it up. Okay, cool.
He extrapolated what he could from the COE one and.
Apply it to the town.
Apply it to the township.
And then you're gonna send your stuff to Sarah and.
Can they send it out?
They can.
You send it out.
And it's through an email?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause that's been great too, and we are getting our package, back to you guys, give us that laid out.
Yeah, really helps a lot. Even though it's really hard.
Yeah, and if, if we don't have anything on the agenda other than land, land, land use planning, we won't get a package.
Yeah, and they can just.
So don't agree, that's why, go ahead and just have her email.
Fantastic.
Cool. Cool. I actually made some progress tonight. No continued items. Hey, there's one item left, guys.
At least gonna celebrate.
Go home and have dinner.
Yeah. Okay. Motion by Ms. White, the second by Mr. Rucker to adjourn. Ms. Smith. Sorry.
Are you playing?
Charlie don't care.
That's how we get Ms. White showing up. If I said that earlier in the meeting, please correct it. It's okay. Motion by Ms. Smith, the second by, a motion by Angela and the second by Adam.
There you go.
Adjournment meeting. All in, all in favor, say aye. Propose? Chair votes, I'm motion carries. We are adjourned.